To record, there we go, thank you. We're returning to our public session from executive session and I need a motion to open the public session.
I'll make the motion.
Anyone jump in there?
It's Krista.
Krista, thank you, and a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Krista motioned and Carrie, I'll take your second. And let's see, so all those in favor of opening the public session, Krista Burdy, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Gretzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Yes.
Danny Hines?
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Motion passes seven zero to open our public session. Okay, so here we are. We, for the web-based promote meeting that we do, we waive the pledge. Dr. Gosh, if you're ready, you can be first up.
Good evening, thank you. Last Friday, we sent a survey to all parents and guardians in the district for additional feedback on digital distance learning. We've received over three hundred and fifty responses so far from families offering their perspective and experiences during this time. The feedback at first glance is really rich in terms of thoughts on what's working and suggestions for improvement. We'll digest this information with the principals and directors as well as our teacher leaders for improvements in the fall should we need to return to distance learning for some reason on either an intermittent or full-time basis. We also ask for some insight and ideas for June, as June is typically filled with trips, fun events, and other end-of-the-year rituals. Our goal is to try and provide students with some of these memorable events through our June planning, so more to come on that. Some good news, our Staying Connected and Building Community group is actively planning a parade around town to say hello to our students and to celebrate the Brewster community. So after our Rotary meeting today, which Dr. Banlow kindly invited me to, we're thinking about now inviting the Brewster High School class of 2016, many of whom are supposed to graduate from college this month but had their ceremonies canceled. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, but we're really excited. Staff is excited as well based on the response rate. So just save the date, Wednesday, June 3rd, and more details to follow later this week. And finally, pickups of student belongings. So last week, we sent out a K-12 letter to the community informing them of the dates and times when they can pick up their belongings. Each building principal has sent a follow-up letter outlining key details specific to each building, and we thank parents and students for partnering with us for this process. And that concludes my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Harrington?
Brent, Brent's on mute.
He's on his phone trying to get in somehow, I don't know.
Let's see. Okay, it's okay, he's gonna have to call in probably and use headphones.
You can't hear me?
We can hear you now.
Oh, you can hear me, okay.
Okay.
All right, I apologize. Okay, so thank you. I'd just like to start by sharing that the HR department had an opportunity to meet with the audit committee on May 19th to review the recommendations noted by our internal auditors conducted by the Certified Public Accountants at Tobin &amp; Company. These auditors, Eric Schmidt and Mark DeRusso, spent several months reviewing the procedures and practices within the HR department. I'm pleased and proud to share that the department's procedures were found to be sound, largely reflective of best practices associated with hiring and retention of staff, along with an overall professional and competent department. However, as with any audit, a corrective action plan was shared with the committee based on the audit's recommendations in an effort to further mitigate potential areas of risk. Such modest areas of further improvement included adapting our internal forms and further streamlining our communications with payroll. We look forward to beginning to put these practices in place in the coming weeks and months. I'd like to personally thank my team, specifically Gigi Farrell, Christine Belcher, and Jenny Alvarado Gonzalez for their effort and participation in the audit, along with Mr. Victor Carlson's support and leadership in helping to frame this feedback within the broader context of the school district. Also, thanks to Mark and Eric from Tobin &amp; Company for their thoughtful work, which helped to further push our thinking to ensure our department's continued improvement by providing practical, practicable, and actionable recommendations. And finally, I'd just like to conclude my comments with a warm thank you to Ms. Christine Belcher, who will be leaving us appalling at the end of this week. In her short tenure as our Personnel Specialist on the non-instructional end, Ms. Belcher worked diligently to support a positive working relationship with the Putnam County Civil Service Department. Additionally, she worked in close concert with our facilities, transportation, food services, and clerical employees. In a short time, Ms. Belcher filled the large shoes left behind by Ms. Maria Breyer's retirement. So I would like to also share that we will have Maria back with us on an interim basis for the month of June, and we do look forward to making an appointment to fill this critical position at the June 9th meeting. And that concludes my comments for this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlson?
Hi, good evening. My only comment for this evening is that I hope that Dr. Harrington can escape from the dungeon that he's trapped in and make it a better setting. Beyond that, I will reserve my comments for the very lengthy budget presentation this evening.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Banlow?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. I have just two remarks this evening, and the first, I want to just, you know, many of you, many board members, you do so much behind the scenes, whether it's serving on committees, attending conventions, workshops, doing webinars, that the public doesn't get to see. So this evening, we have a special surprise for our board president. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tralor to share that screen. So the New York State School Board Association has awarded your president, this is Sonia Masika, with a Level Four Lifetime Achievement Award for her numerous hours that she puts in professionally and particularly in the area of board governance, knowledge, and skills. So I just want to congratulate Ms. Masika. It's a privilege and an honor to work with her every day, but there's so many things that she does behind the scenes, and many of the board members do behind the scenes, that none of us really know about. So just a big congratulations to Sonia this evening, so thank you. Thank you for your service to our children. All right, and then my second comment this evening, we did get a little bit of guidance from the state regarding what is the template gonna look like for us that we're gonna need to follow as a district for reentry in the fall, so that we keep our staff and our students safe. So there's going to be a statewide task force that's being formed with two medical experts throughout the entire state. There will be people from the region, they are looking for a board member, we've, Sonia has thrown her hat into the ring, they will select one board member from the Lower Hudson Region. Our president of the Lower Hudson Superintendent's Council will be on this statewide task force, Mr. Ray Sanchez, he is a superintendent in Osning, and also Mr. Tom Casey is being asked to throw his hat in the ring as a union rep for the Lower Hudson Region. So we will be getting distancing and health check rules that will come from the CDC, but for the first time, we were able to see specific focus groups that they want us to start to form. So I will be meeting again with our Safety, Health, and Emergency Planning Committee to talk about the template, to share the information that I just received, we'll be meeting this Thursday. We will be forming focus groups, and we're going to be reaching out to the community, we're gonna need some parents and some community members on these focus groups in order to serve. By the third week in June, we should be getting the information from Albany as to how we can proceed, we are preparing, and by the end of July, we will need to, as a district, put our reentry template, our reentry plan into the business portal for the governor to review and to approve. So I will keep the board and I'll keep the district and the community apprised as we go along, but I'm just gonna, just, I could just say right now, folks that are listening in, we're gonna need your expertise as we plan, so if there's any parents, community members, in the weeks ahead, you're gonna be seeing some information coming out from us to ask if you would join in on one of these many focus groups that we're being asked to form, which is a really great thing, we get everybody's input and feedback. There will also be several surveys that'll be coming out that we want you to keep an eye out for. So those are the only remarks I have this evening, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Banlow? I guess I'm up next, I'll say thank you for that, it is my honor to serve the community and, you know, do my best while I'm in role, so thank you for acknowledging that. And I also just wanted to share with everyone, the board is aware, but I will be attending Thursday, the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association has its annual meeting, we'll be doing it virtually as well, but they'll be discussing local topics and issues again on Thursday, so I'll report back anything from that meeting as well. So that's it for me, we have a big meeting ahead of us still, but I will move on to our student representative, I believe Erin is with us today, there you are.
I am.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. Last week, the senior students and community were notified of plans regarding graduation preparations, including the car parade and drive-in and possible fall activities. Anecdotally, I can say these plans have been met with excitement and enthusiasm from community members and senior students. The plans can be found on the Brewster Schools website, that's all I have to say tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we move on now to our presentation this evening. Before I introduce Mr. Carlson, I just want to comment that immediately following Victor's presentation, we will allow for the community to comment. Mr. Tralor, our Director of Technology, will be managing the time and the entry of community members who would like to address the board with a comment or a question, so we'll go over a little bit in more detail after, but those comments will be specific to the budget as is required by education law. The following public remarks on the agenda will revert to our practice, which is to address them, anything that's come to the board in advance of the meeting, and that's it for now. So we will go in a little more detail of how we'll manage the public comments after Victor's presentation. So thank you, Victor, take it away.
Okay, good evening, can I just confirm that everyone can see my screen here?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm gonna check in after each slide just to make sure that you can still hear me, I don't wanna get lost again like I did the few weeks ago. So, good evening, everyone. So this is actually our ninth budget presentation of the year, it just seems like it'll never end, so this is again our ninth, and it's a lengthy one, we wanna make sure that our budget hearing, we are as transparent and informative as we possibly can be. Just in summary here, the highlights included in our budget are investments in three new teacher positions to lower class sizes at the K level, and Dr. Gosh will go over those in greater detail midway through the presentation. 2021 builds momentum on the strides that we took in this current 1920 year, and especially as they relate to Project Lead the Way and other STEAM initiatives. Use of fund balance and reserves, so we met with our Finance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee in the middle of April to review a fund balance plan that we developed in light of the sale of Garden Street Elementary School and the cost avoidances that we've experienced due to the extended closure, which are generating a surplus for the current year ended 1920. We wanna make sure that we put those funds to good use and restore them to the taxpayers, and in doing so, the next bullet, we were able to limit our tax growth to just 1.48%. So we were well below the tax cap, so the tax cap sets the benchmark, and we were $580,000 below that benchmark, and again, our tax levy, proposed tax levy for next year is just 1.48%. However, the last bullet stated uncertainty that continues to loom, and it still is not any clearer today than it was two weeks ago. So as we've discussed, we need to make sure that we remain flexible and be prepared to adapt to a variety of scenarios which may be presented to us at any point during the next school year. And everyone can still hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so here are the Garden Street proceeds, again, we've been getting a lot of questions about that, so I wanted to make sure that we put that in the slide, so we received about $1.3 million of net proceeds after paying off a small amount of debt on the building. Each, New York State law requires that a school district set aside funds received from the sale of real property in what's called a reserve for tax reduction, and it has a 10-year limitation, and you're required to use it over a period of 10 years. However, in recognition of the financial constraints surrounding us, we chose to accelerate that timeline to a five-year period. And as you can see, we chose a declining balance method which protects the district from creating a fiscal cliff for itself, because had the district used the entire balance in one year, 1.3 million, in the following year, after that balance is totally exhausted, we would have a hole in our budget of about 1.3 million that we would need to fill. So again, we've identified a declining balance method, which is obviously a very responsible method. In 2021, we're applying $450,000 of that 1.3 million towards the next year's budget, which is about 34% of our reserve fund. The following year, again, using a declining balance, we have to wean ourselves off the use of these sale proceeds, so we're reducing our reliance on the sale proceeds by about $90,000. And each year, we go on a declining balance method until it's completely exhausted by the end of the 24, 25 year, and we'll have a small $75,000 budget gap that we will have entering the 25, 26 school year. But again, at that point, the entire Garden Street sale proceeds will have been exhausted. Again, it's typical that a 10-year declining balance method is used, however, in recognition of the financial constraints around this, we chose to accelerate that. So again, I just wanted to make it clear, the use of Garden Street proceeds. In terms of our total fund balance and reserves, again, this was discussed at length at our Combined Finance Committee and Budget Advisory Committee meeting in mid-April, we're increasing the use of our fund balance and our reserves, so start with the top row, appropriated fund balance, these are basically the rainy day funds that are not earmarked toward a specific use, so we're increasing our use of our rainy day funds by about $754,000. The next four items have to do with reserves that are established for a specific purpose. So TRS Reserve is a new reserve that we established last year, it's, TRS is Teachers' Retirement System Reserve, it's used to pay for pension contributions, so we're relying on $75,000 towards pension contributions in 2021. ERS is the Employees' Retirement System Reserve, it's the other pension system that our employees participate in. We're utilizing $21,000 of this reserve towards next year. Finally, the E-Bal Reserve, Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, we're using $200,000 of this to offset expenditures increased in retirement costs that we'll be discussing later on in the presentation. And then finally, Reserve for Tax Reduction, we just discussed, are the Garden Street sale proceeds. Again, in total, fund balance and reserves, we're increasing by 1.5 million, which offsets the increase in the tax levy and provides relief to the taxpayer. If you'd like to look at the fund balance plan, I've hyperlinked it in here, and you can take a look, it's also uploaded to our finance website. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. So here's our revenue budget summary, so the tax levy makes up the majority of our revenue budget, 78.2 million, again, it's an increase of about 1.1 million or 1.48%. It is well below the tax cap, it is $580,000 below the tax cap. Local sources include pilots, interest revenue, donations, interfund transfers, and other miscellaneous revenues, an increase of about $800,000. And I want to note that this is, this increase is due to a large interfund transfer from the Debt Service Fund, which is going to offset an increase in our debt service payments in 2021, which we'll discuss later on in the presentation, it's a direct offset of an increase in that expense. However, interest revenues have declined, obviously, with the Federal Reserve slashing interest rates to near zero, so we reduced our interest income for next year. State and federal aid is decreasing about 400,000 or 2.2%. Again, there's so much uncertainty with the state's budget, unfortunately, there's been nothing that has changed over the course of the past two weeks. We anticipate that this is gonna go on for quite some time before we have any clarity with regard to the state and its ability to meet its obligations to public education or other local governments. Finally, appropriated fund balance and appropriated reserves, we just discussed those in the last slide, increasing from 1.5 million to 3 million in total, and our total revenue budget is $103.9 million or an increase of 2.9%. So if you look at it, really, the state is controlling the majority of our budget through the tax cap formula and through our state aid allocation. About 95% of our budget is really controlled by the state, and local sources, which really we don't have much control over them, account for about 5% of our total revenue budget. So really, the state kind of dictates what we're allowed to do. And the way that we're presenting our budget this evening is in the same manner that it's constructed, so beginning in around October, we begin, our budget builders begin building their budgets for next year. Starting in late November and through December, the budget managers meet with the district office, we review their requests, we challenge them, we make sure that they have to vet out each of their requests before it goes forward and is presented to the board. So again, we're presenting our departmental budgets first, and then we'll show. So, starting with the Board of Ed, District Clerk, District Meeting, and Superintendent, again, I'm showing what percentage of the budget this makes up. So in terms of the total budget, this department makes up 1/10th of 1% of the entire budget. In total, it's an increase of about $18,000, the majority of that increase is attributable to Vision 2025, which is our, the next iteration of our long-term planning for the district, which we're going to be taking on in the 2021 school year. Moving on to finance, which makes up 2/10ths of a percentage of our budget, just a small increase of 2%. This category includes things like auditing, fiscal advisor services, and purchasing services, again, small increase of just 2%. Human resources also makes up a very small part of our budget, 0.2%, small increase there, 3.3%. Most of HR expenditures are for BOSI's services, for employee assistance programs, employee benefits coordination, including the Affordable Care Act, recruitment negotiations, paperless application and record-keeping, as Dr. Harrington mentioned, the HR department is moving towards a paperless onboarding system for our new applicants and our new employees. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Okay, moving on to facilities, so facilities makes up actually a larger part of our budget, about 3% of our budget has to do with our facilities items. You can see the majority of the increase, 498,000, is attributable to the SRO contract, so we reclassified the SRO contract from the instructional portion of our budget and reclassified it to the operations and maintenance or facilities portion of our budget, and that was based on guidance that we got from State Education Department. So if not for this reclassification, the facilities budget would have remained relatively flat. However, again, we did reclassify the SRO contract, just a reminder, we have four SROs, one at each school building, and in addition to that, we have an SPO at Brewster High School. And in terms of our facilities budget, and you'll see this a few times throughout the presentation, our method for budgeting, because of the abnormalities of each year, and this year in particular, in terms of a budget approach, we don't budget for normal, we always budget for anticipated worst-case scenario, and that's not unique to Brewster, that's not even unique to school districts, it's mostly a government approach to budgeting. So we don't rely on how many terms of natural gas we used last year, because next year may be very different. So I just wanted to include this caveat, and again, you'll see it a few other times throughout the presentation, of the approach to budgeting is that we make sure that we budget for anticipated worst-case scenario and not the average and not normal. Other unallocated general support, these are items that aren't directly attributable to any one department. In total, our unallocated general support budget increased $70,000, the two main reasons or three main reasons for the increase, increases in insurance, so New York State passed the Child Victims Act, which increased insurance premiums for school districts across New York State. Also, increase in refund of real property taxes, anticipating increases in challenges to assessments for our tax base, and finally, increase in BOSI's administrative and capital charge. The majority of that increase is related to an increase in the BOSI's capital charge. So like a school district, the BOSI's campus in Yorktown requires renovations from time to time, BOSI's has established a capital reserve in all of the component districts in Putnam Northern and Westchester, or that, or members of that BOSI's are paying into that capital reserve so that they can improve the learning facilities for our students as they attend their campuses. In total, an increase of 70 million or 5.3%. Moving on to curriculum assessment and instruction, which makes up just 1.3% of the budget, contractual, you see a large decrease in contractual, and most of that has to do with decrease in professional learning. So you'll see actually throughout the next several slides, slides of theme, due to a lot of one-time expenditures that we incurred in the 1920 school year, which are no longer required in the 2021 school year. So that decrease in professional learning has to do with the implementation of a K5 math program that we undertook in the 1920 school year. The large increase is due to BOSI's occupational education, so New York State requires multiple pathways to graduation, career and technical education being one of them. The program in BOSI's continues to grow in popularity as our students attend those half-day and full-day sessions down in Yorktown. BOSI's bills the component school districts based on the three-year rolling average, so we actually experienced an increase in 2021, we're anticipating another increase entering into 21, 22, based on our enrollment, that we can identify and recognize that there's been an increase there. So in total, the curriculum assessment instruction budget, an increase of 145,000, but again, the majority of that increase is due to the occupational education program, the tuitions at Putnam Northern and Westchester BOSI's. Can everyone hear me again?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to JFK Elementary School, which makes up just 2/10ths of a percent of the entire budget, decrease in contractual, again, for the same reason as I described with the curriculum budget, decrease in professional learning for the implementation of the K5 math program, again, that was a one-time cost in 1920, and we're relieved of it in 2021. I'm sorry, actually, the decrease in contractual is actually due to the centralization of our printer and copier costs, excuse me, so that's the reason for the decrease in contractual, and you'll see that throughout the next four slides as we go over the school buildings. In terms of textbooks, there's where you'll see the decrease related to the K5 math pilot that took place in 1920, so there was actually a spike in 1920 and some relief entering 2021. So in total, the JFK building budget went down by almost $41,000. Moving on to CV Star, same concept, same theme, contractual costs went down due to the centralization of printer and copier costs, textbooks went down due to the one-time expense in 1920 for the K5 math prop pilot, and in total, the building budget actually decreased nearly $55,000. Wells Middle School, same concept, contractual decreased almost $22,000 due to the printer and copier centralization in the, went to the technology budget, in total, the Wells Middle School building budget went down about $21,000. Brewster High School, same concept, decrease in contractual, supplies, however, increased, and the reason for that increase, as we described in our opening, is the investment that we're making in Project Lead the Way and specifically biomedical strand at Brewster High School, improving and enhancing on our science program is another one of our goals for this upcoming budget. So in total, the Brewster High School budget actually increased slightly, about $1,800, $1,800 or 0.6%. Can everyone hear me one more time?
Yes.
Okay, and I apologize, I know it's annoying, but I just wanna make sure that I'm not speaking to myself. So, moving on to the Pupil Personnel Services budget, so PPS budget is increasing 544,000, and the majority of these increases are due to New York State increasing the rates for tuition contracts for our students who are placed out of district, attending public schools, private schools, and to a slight degree, BOSI services. So this is not necessarily attributable to an increase in enrollment and our students being placed out, but rather, an increase in the rate that those private institutions and public institutions are able to charge us. So again, New York State has a division called the Rate Setting Unit, and they decide the rates that these institutions can charge for tuition contracts. And unfortunately, several years may pass before the Rate Setting Unit actually updates their rates, so when they finally update their rates, not only do you have to pay the current rate, but you also have to pay the retro, retroactive rates that should have been in place for the past several years. retroactive rates that should have been in place for the past several years. So this is the year in which we're being charged with those retroactive rates. And again, the the new rates are in place moving forward. So those are the those are the reasons for the increase in the PPS budget. And again, in terms of PPS, very similar to facilities, we don't we don't budget for status quo. We budget for anticipated in a worst case scenario. So we don't know how many of our students currently may require an out-of-district placement next year. We also don't know if a new student will move into the district, you know, in September or October and require an out-of-district placement, which can be very costly. So we do our best to anticipate, and we use a conservative approach for that. Technology and innovation makes up two percent of the budget. So all of those copier and printer contracts that I discussed earlier, we are centralizing in the technology and innovation budget. So you see here the the main increase in that budget is in BOSI services, and that has to do with our printer and copiers that we've now reclassified into the tech and innovation budget. And also, an increase due to the installment purchase agreements that we're embarking on. So as part of our our long-range financial planning, we've issued two installment purchase agreements to replace obsolete equipment. And we're doing that to mimic the Smart Schools Bond Investment Act, which several years back provided the district with an injection of about one point six million dollars worth of technology. And what we did was we took a a slow and methodical approach with that, and we phased it in over a period of four years, because we wanted to make sure that we were able to keep up with the equipment after we've released it. So over a period of four years, one point six million dollars divided by four years is about four hundred thousand. So each year, we're attempting to replace about four hundred thousand dollars worth of instructional equipment as these devices inevitably become obsolete. So there there's the increase in BOSI services. And it's also very important to note that through the use of BOSI services, we generate state aid. So our BOSI's aid will increase as a result of us participating in these shared agreements with other school districts and the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center for these purchases. Other than that, if you look across the board at the technology budget, there's a number of decreases across the board, and a lot of them have to do with one-time expenditures to improve safety and data security, also server replacement, which mitigates some of the increase in this budget. In in total, our technology and innovation budget increased two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. And can everyone hear me one more time?
Yes.
All right, I I know I'm so sorry, but I'm gonna have to keep asking. Okay, so PE Health and Athletics budget makes up just four tenths of a percentage of our budget. Increases in contractual supplies for both PE Health and Athletics and also our athletic teams as we look to purchase new uniforms and certain equipment for certain of our teams. BOSI services increased due to Section One membership, officials fees, PE Consortium, family ID and huddle. In total, our PE Health and Athletics budget increased about twenty-eight thousand. Our Performing Arts budget is a very small portion of our budget, less than one tenth of a percent of our budget. The the main increases in in the Performing Arts and Music budget have to do with large instrument purchases as well as set production for plays. And in total, the Performing Arts budget increased about fifty-eight hundred dollars. Other unallocated instruction, very small portion of our budget, really just two items, the BCLC, and there's no change to the BCLC. And then health services for our students who attend private parochial schools. So in New York State, it's required that a school district reimburse school districts who are educating Brewster students within their boundaries. So for example, we have a number of students who are Brewster residents who are attending St. James Elementary School in in the Carmel School District. So we're required to reimburse the Carmel School District because the Carmel School District is providing health services to our Brewster students within their boundaries. That budget is decreasing by about ten thousand dollars. In total, our other unallocated instruction budget is decreasing by ten thousand dollars. Transportation makes up one point two percent of our budget. Again, another example of a one-time expense that we incurred in nineteen twenty that's providing relief in twenty twenty-one. We had a proposed a one-time garage lift in nineteen twenty that that lift was actually just installed last week, and I believe it's it's actually may still be ongoing or wrapping up, which led to a significant decrease in the equipment costs of about hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Repair costs have gone down, and this is attributable to the success of our fleet replacement plan. Contractual services increased slightly, about seven thousand dollars. Contractual costs have decreased in specialty repairs, especially has resulted in a decrease in that line. Supplies for diesel fuel and gasoline have declined slightly. However, we have no idea what diesel will be a year from now. And supplies for the general office increased by about thirteen thousand. But in total, the entire transportation budget actually decreased by over two hundred and six thousand dollars, which obviously provides a tremendous amount of relief in the twenty twenty-one school year. Again, similar to those other departments, we we talked about, I I mentioned earlier, what will the price of diesel diesel and gasoline be fifteen months after the budget's adopted? At this point, it's it's more like thirteen months because we're so late in in the budget vote process. And, you know, we we also have an aging fleet, and we recognize that. And fortunately, our fleet is, you know, we're we're starting to improve on that, and we're starting to see the the benefits of our fleet replacement plan. And, you know, those those benefits notably are decreases in our parts costs and decrease in our repairs costs. And and also, when we talk about the when Dr. Gosh talks about the staffing portion of our budget, we'll note that we had a retirement, we had a retirement in the Transportation Department, a mechanic retirement, a position that after this employee's retirement, the position will not be filled, and we will be abolishing that position, which also provides for greater savings in the district moving forward. Our debt service budget makes up eight percent of our budget. I mentioned it very a long time ago in the beginning of the presentation when we talked about revenues. And it we had a large revenue, an interfund transfer from the debt service fund. And that money is being used to offset this increase in the debt service fund. Twenty twenty-one is a unique year where we're issuing a bond, a long-term bond to continue paying off the twenty fourteen, December twenty fourteen, district-wide improvement, capital improvement project that again was approved by the voters in December of twenty fourteen. It was completed in September of twenty eighteen. During the construction period, we had issued bond anticipation notes, which are short-term borrowings to pay for construction. After a period of five years, it's a requirement by general municipal law that a school district issue long-term bonds to continue paying off that debt. So in the year of issuance, we're actually having a double up, where we're paying the principal and interest on the bond anticipation note for the borrowing that's taking place in this nineteen twenty year, as well as the principal and interest that we're we will incur on the bond in the twenty twenty-one school year. So we have a double up in in cost in that one year. Utilizing funds from the Debt Service Reserve Fund allows us to mitigate any impact on the instructional side of our budget. Then moving forward, you see we have a note at the very bottom. Moving forward, we're actually going to have significant relief in terms of bond anticipation note payments, because we will have converted that that debt into a long-term bond. This is really the the subject of our Finance Committee meetings each year. We have a meeting coming up. I believe at the ninth of June, where we'll be discussing the upcoming bond in July. You know, a silver lining to all of this madness is the rate environment is extremely favorable. So the district is going to hopefully in a month, two months, when we issue our bond, be able to lock in a very favorable interest rates, and we'll be discussing that with our Finance Committee in two weeks from today. So in total, our debt service expense increased nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, again, the entirety of which is covered by our debt service interfund transfer from the debt service fund. Can everyone hear me? Yes. All right, thank you. So moving on to now, so the largest portion of our budget is salaries and benefits. Now we move on to salaries and benefits. Salaries alone make up fifty-one percent of our budget. Central administration, we had a number of retirements and resignations. Central office led to a decrease over the budget of about sixty-seven thousand dollars entering next year. Operations and maintenance, slight increase of just one point three percent. Curriculum development, supervision and in-service training, again, a number of retirements at the administrative level and resignations as well led to a decrease in that line. Teaching general education, an increase of about a one point one million. Special education, we actually had a reclassification of reading specialists. And we we want to reclassify them from special education to general education to more accurately reflect their assignments. So you see the two of those are really interrelated. Teaching general education, the increase, the majority of that increase is related to reassignments or reclassifications of reading specialists. Moving on to Student Support Services, remain mostly flat, a total budget of four point four million dollars.
Victor. He might be talking to himself now. Hopefully, he figures it out.
Like, I can move on to the staffing portion, and we can come back to those few slides.
Okay.
I'll test him in the meantime.
Okay.
Yeah, let him know that Dr. Gosh is gonna take over for a bit. Can you share your screen?
Okay. Okay. So you have seen this this photo before. This was our a picture from our summer new educator orientation. So due to the support of the board and the community, we were able to add positions last year, resulting in the strengthening of our programs and increased curricular offerings for our students. Looking forward to the twenty twenty twenty-one budget, we are looking to do three things. The first is to continue to build on our gains from twenty. The second is to decrease class size and identified problem areas. And finally, to continue to meet mandates in a way that serves the needs of all of our students. So with those three goals in mind, we turn to staffing by building, starting with JFK. As you remember, we added four teaching assistant positions mid-year this year in order to address enrollment increases that we saw once school began. While we cannot continue those TA positions, we are proposing that we reallocate a section from third grade to first grade, which is an identified problem area right now. Due to the decrease in state aid, we are begrudgingly changing a recommendation from our initial March staffing presentation. So at this time, we are not recommending to add an additional kindergarten section. However, as always, this is a grade where we are constantly watching enrollment. At this point, we are currently at one hundred and sixty-eight kindergartners that are fully enrolled and ready for September, and there are thirty more in the in the pipeline. Our demographer has predicted a ceiling all the way up to two hundred and twenty students. So as I mentioned before, our plan is to make sure that we have regularly scheduled check-in meetings in two-week increments. And we need we're going to make a decision by August first as to whether or not we add that section. So if that if on August first, those numbers push us above those class size guidelines, we will be adding a section. Onto CV star. So as I just mentioned, we're reallocating that third grade position down to first grade. So it is a loss for CV star, but it is budget neutral overall. The the addition that we are recommending for CV star is the bilingual or T-SOL position that we have spoken about before. And and the purpose behind this position is really, again, twofold. First, we're looking to meet a mandate that we're currently not meeting in twelve out of thirteen grades, which is the bilingual education requirement. So this stipulates that if we have twenty more students that speak the same home language other than English in a given grade, we need to have either a dual-language program or a transitional bilingual program. This year, we had a bilingual vision team that studied this issue in depth, and the recommendation is that we move forward with a transitional bilingual program. So the goal with a program like that is where the students use their home language as a bridge to learning English. So our model and our our idea for this, so so the first part is to meet that mandate. The second part would be to really decrease class sizes in core certain core areas across certain grade levels. So what I mean by that is the model for this would be this person, this bilingual teacher, would teach entering and emerging ENL students in math and two other curricular areas as somewhere across grades three through five, depending on what those what those numbers are. And they are pulled for those three subject areas. So not only are the the ENL students getting targeted instruction, meeting state mandates in in what we know is is best research-based model, but it also then decreases class sizes for those students from which the for those classes in which the students are are being pulled. So it's a it's a win-win for us, and it helps us to build our capacity in terms of of meeting those mandates. Onto the middle school. Another identified problematic area that has arisen is at is at the middle school in terms of social studies. This is actually a restoration of a position that was lost in the middle school years ago. There's one less social studies teacher at the middle school in terms of the core English social studies, I'm sorry, English, science and math. By restoring this position, you're basically balancing the offerings and balancing the number of slots that students can be scheduled into when creating a master schedule. So not only will this decrease class sizes in across social studies in three grades, but it will also make the other core areas more balanced, just due to the nature of how a master schedule is is built. Onto the high school, we initially had proposed to add another ENL position across the middle school and the high school due to the changes that that occurred in late March, early April in terms of state aid. We are no longer able to offer that, so there are no staffing recommendations for the high school. Onto PE, PE Health and Athletics. We currently, this year, have a teacher on special assignment who is part-time in the classroom, part-time assistant to the director of Athletics, PE and Health. We are proposing that that department still receive that support, but in not in the form of teacher release time, instead in the form of stipend and positions for each of the each of the three seasons. This way, it's a significant significant cost savings, and the department still gets the support that is needed. Onto People Personnel Services. Our proposed addition for PPS is in the form of a special education teacher at JFK Elementary School. And again, the the PPS staff under Dr. Kennedy's leadership has done a stellar job in making sure that we have the most up-to-date and accurate numbers when when making these projections and recommendations. So at this point in time, given the needs of of our students, we are recommending an additional CodeTod section at JFK. Sorry, the alarm is going off in my house. And as always, this staffing is CSE-dependent, so we'll continue to monitor the needs in this area.
Michelle, is your house okay?
Well, you know, the budget, we must go on.
Seriously, are you guys okay?
Fine, it's fine. I would hear other noises if that were the case. Thank you. In in terms of the nurse, we're proposing a point five reduction. We have a part-time nurse currently serving across the district. Due to retirement, this this position will be, and and the medical needs of the student that this nurse is currently serving, moving on to a building where there are two nurses, we do not see a a need for for this position into next year. Over to transportation, as Mr. Carlson was was speaking about the fleet replacement plan, we are, due to attrition, recommending the reduction of a mechanic position. So overall, we are proposing two and a half instructional positions, what we call FTEs, or full-time equivalents, an increase of two and a half, and non-instructional a decrease of of one and a half. So now on to some of the the numbers and the data that has helped to drive these decisions in in the form of enrollment and class size projections. So you've seen this this chart before. We'll begin we'll begin with JFK. On the left side is where we are currently in terms of our sections, number of students and and class size average. The right side is where we are projected to be for next year. So you see here the the change that we made to kindergarten based on the initial state aid projections. Again, as I'm going to talk about briefly in the next slide, we have a plan for that that we see in first grade, going from nine positions up to ten to address that that larger class. That position is coming from third grade, and second grade stays at at nine. Just for your certification, kindergarten, a class size policy range is eighteen to twenty-two students and grades one and two, twenty-one to twenty-four. As I mentioned, with kindergarten, very much on our mind. Dr. Zamplin just sent us updated numbers today. By by August first, we will be making a decision as to whether or not to add that section based on our enrollment at that point and our class size guidelines. Onto CV star. Even with the reallocation of the classroom teacher to JFK, CV star is still within the class size policies, which is for grade three, also twenty-one to twenty-four, and grades four and five, twenty-three to twenty-seven. Onto the middle school. Here you see a range. This is because it's difficult to report and predict out what the needs would be based on core areas and electives. We need courses to also fill elective slots. Mr. Clark and I did our best to project this out. The proposed addition of a social studies section will The proposed addition of a social studies section will add one position at each grade level, which again, will help reduce class sizes in social studies across grades six through eight, and will also balance class sizes in the other core content areas. So that these are, these are our best projections, given the information that we have now for class sizes at Wells Middle School. And finally, onto the high school, again, very difficult to predict. The high school schedule is built differently than any other schedule. We put out course offerings to students, we then use the numbers that they, that students sign up for to build the master schedule. So again, it's very difficult in May to predict what class sizes are going to be for next year, but we do know what the class sizes are this year. You see them here in 1920, they're below our, our class size policy guidelines. We know that going into next year, we are not asking for any additional staff, so it's the same amount of staffing, and we should have about 30 less students. That's the difference between the seniors exiting and the ninth graders, ninth graders coming in. And this is where I'm hoping Mr. Carlson is back online.
I am back, and can you hear me? All right. I will, I'll, I'll take over here, Dr. Gosh, if you can stop sharing. I apologize for my absence. Let's see here. Okay, so I'm back, and everyone can hear me. Everyone can hear me, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I think I left off on salaries. If, if, if not, I can move on to employee benefits. Salaries is good. Okay, so I'll, I'll just start in the beginning. So central administration salaries decreased by about $67,000 due to some retirements and resignations. Operations and maintenance increased slightly, just 1.3%. Curriculum development, supervision, and in-service training, a decrease of about $68,000, again, due to retirements and resignations. Teaching general education and special education, these two are really interrelated, so we reclassified the reading specialists, which were traditionally coded to special education, and recoded them to general education to more accurately reflect their assignments. So you see the decrease in special, that is directly attributable to the increase in the general education there. Student support services remains about the same, at about $4.4 million. Co-curricular clubs and athletics, Dr. Gosh mentioned earlier the reduction of the .5 assistant to the athletic director, which is related to this decrease here. Transportation budget increased just 1.5%. And the civic activities for the BCLC remains the same. So in total, again, our salaries budget makes up about 51% of the entire budget, an increase of $396,000 or 0.7%. Moving on to employee benefits, which is another 25%, so between the two, 75% of our budget is related to salaries and benefits. We're a service organization, so salaries and benefits dominates our budget. Starting with the employees' retirement system, an increase of about $54,000. You may recall from about 25 slides ago, some use of certain reserves, and you'll see them reflected here. So the employees' retirement system, ERS Reserve, we're drawing down about $21,000 to offset this increase for next year. Teachers' retirement system, we're drawing down about $75,000 from the TRS Reserve to help offset this increase in TRS expenses. Social Security and Medicare is increasing by about 2.1%, which is in line with salary increases. Workers' comp, slight decrease there as we've improved our experience rating in our workers' comp consortium. Life, unemployment, and disability insurance, we have an increase in unemployment, our unemployment budget for next year, in anticipation of potentially another extended closure. Hospital, medical, and dental insurance, an increase of just 2.3%. Other union welfare benefits remains about the same, an increase of just 1.8% in retirement benefits, or retirement payments. So again, recall back, one of the earlier slides, we've increased the use of our employee benefit accrued liability reserve by $200,000 to offset this increase in this expenditure, which is just more in line with our incurred expenses. So in total, our employee benefits budget increased 3.2% or $808,000. So in summary, our expenditure budget, general support increased about $900,000. The majority of that increase is due to the reclass of the SRO agreement with Ploton County, as well as the centralization of printer and copier costs within the technology budget. Instruction increased about $300,000 or 0.7%. Transportation had a decrease of about $100,000, again, due to a number of one-time items within the department, especially that vehicle lift replacement. Boy benefits up 3.2%, we just described that. Debt service, an increase of about $1 million, which is offset in.
All right, we'll give him, we'll give him a minute to, to hop back on.
Okay, texting him.
And he made, he made fun of Brent for being in a, in a.
I can't wait to get through this. Where do I leave off?
Pull, pull up your screen.
Did I get to the expenditure?
Expenditure summary.
Yep.
No, I think it was, this is the budget.
Yeah. Just running from the top. Okay. Here I go again. Okay, so in, in total here, so our general support budget increase of about $900,000. The majority of this increase is attributable to the reclassification of the SRO contract from the instructional side of our budget. So you'll notice a, I guess this instructional side of the budget would have increased by about $500,000 more, if not for the reclass of the SRO agreement. So instruction is a slight increase of $300,000, transportation a decrease of $100,000, again, due to one-time vehicle lift replacement and a number of other items that we're able to reduce due to the success of our fleet replacement plan. Employee benefits increased just 3.2%. Debt increased by about $1 million. And again, the entirety of this increase is offset by a transfer into the revenue budget from the debt service reserve fund. Transfers for special aid and capital fund remain unchanged, and in total, our expenditure, expenditure budget, $103.9 million, an increase of 2.9%. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So here's just a, you know, quick look at, at our, our budget. Again, I, I mentioned salaries and benefits dominate our budget. We are a service industry, so naturally, the majority of our expenses are within people and salaries and benefits. Debt service makes up about 8% of our budget, and all of the other things, the, the things that, that students need, and the things that the buildings need to, to run make up about 14% of our budget. Dr. Gosh, thank, thank you for jumping in, taking care of staffing while I was on hiatus. I'll move on to proposition number two for bus purchases. I'll check in one more time and make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Bus purchases, so the financial benefits of the bus purchases is that we're able to spread the costs out over a period of five years, similar to a car loan. And because of that, we have predictable future expenses over the next five years, and we also have steady state aid revenues. So the New York State actually gives us 48.7% reimbursement on each purchase, so it really ends up being a buy-one-get-one-free deal from them. The state aid that we receive is also received over a period of five years to help offset the expenses, you know, again, similar to a car loan. Operational benefits, obviously newer and safer vehicles, improve fuel economy, which is also a financial benefit, reduce repair costs and availability of bus parts to some of our buses that are very old. It's difficult to actually find the, the parts that we need to replace them. And of course, increased service availability and the reliability of newer vehicles. And everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so this next chart, we show the number of disposals and the number of replacements. So each year, the variable is the number of disposals. So we don't know each year how many vehicles are going to fall out of service. And as you can see, it, it can be quite volatile. We've ranged between five and up to 18 vehicles, unfortunately, in the 18, 19 school year that were forced out of service. What we can control is the number of replacements. So we do the best we can to anticipate the number of disposals in order to maintain our fleet at a, at a level and consistent number that obviously meets the demands of our transportation requirements. So in 2021, we're requesting to purchase nine vehicles. Again, we're uncertain of how many vehicles will fall out of service. Year-to-date this year, eight vehicles in the 1920 school year have fallen out of service. So we actually had a net loss of one vehicle in our fleet size. So we're, we're requesting to borrow $730,000 for the purchase of those nine vehicles, four 20-passenger buses, 235-passenger buses, 148, 166 with air conditioning. So we do have a summer school program for our special needs students, and it is a requirement on certain IP's that we provide air-conditioned transportation. And finally, 177-passenger buses. You see a variety of, of different vehicle sizes that we need to travel all throughout the district, you know, more dense areas than others, and, and, you know, which we need larger buses for, and then also more versatile vehicles for our transportation in, you know, you know, other parts of the district, or even out-of-district transportation for students in private and parochial schools. So the annual costs, I mentioned state aid at 48%, 48.7%, so buy one, get one free. First of five annual payments is due in 2122, not in 2021. So really, two years from now, not this upcoming budget that we're talking about, there's absolutely no impact whatsoever on the 2021 budget. All of the payments for this borrowing are deferred until the subsequent year, 2122. So again, there's no impact whatsoever on, on this current year budget that we're discussing this evening. The 15, 16 purchases that were made will be paid off, and we do this in accordance with our long-range financial plan. So I mentioned earlier, we, we're discussing the technology device replacement plan, very similar. We have a fleet replacement plan where we dispose of our buses, and because of that falling off, the incremental annual cost to the average Southeast and Patterson homeowner is just $3 and $2 respectively, because the $480,000 borrowing is being replaced by $730,000 borrowing, the incremental increase, again, just $3 and $2 respectively. And everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So on, on June 9th, so hopefully you'll be receiving your absentee ballot shortly, I'll discuss that in a minute. You'll see two propositions. Proposition one, the general fund budget, $103,961,692, an increase of 2.9%. Tax levy associated with that, $78.2 million, an increase of 1.48%. Again, under the tax cap by about $580,000. I embedded the budget statement here for you, for your future review. Proposition number two, just discussed on the last couple of slides, bus purchases of nine vehicles. Again, the first, the five annual payments is not due until the 2021, 22 school year. Again, I embedded the link to the fleet replacement plan presentation from way back on February 25th. So we've been discussing, fortunately, what do we do, what happens if the budget fails? So there's no provision in the executive order for statewide budget revote, and that typically happens the third Tuesday in June, which would be a week from tonight, or a week from the budget vote date on June 9th. So really, there's only one chance to pass the budget, and if the budget fails, the district is forced to adopt a contingency budget, which means the tax levy cannot increase the levy of the prior year. So in 1920, our tax levy was 77.1 million. Our 2021 proposed budget calls for a $78.3 million tax levy, an increase of $1.2 million. If the budget fails, it would require the district to reduce the tax levy by $1.2 million. So we discussed this last week, our approach to a contingency budget, and obviously, our approach is always what is least impactful to students, so we want to make sure that we start as far away from the classroom as we possibly can. The first, first recommendation would be to accelerate the use of the reserve for tax reduction. I mentioned that we're using it over a five-year period. This would accelerate it to a three-year period, and you can see that the impact would be that instead of having a $75,000 budget gap at the conclusion of the use of the reserve, there would be a $220,000 gap. Eliminate the BCLC program, which would eliminate opportunities for community members. Equipment renovations and security locker placement, $100,000 for each of these items. We would defer those until the following year. Building departmental supplies would mostly reduce project lead-the-way materials at Brewster High School. Again, we mentioned, one of our goals for this year's budget is to build off the momentum of 1920, and unfortunately, we would obviously have to slow the, the growth of project lead-the-way and other curricular offerings. The special patrol officer at Brewster High School, so would eliminate after-school supervision for students participating in clubs and athletics. The elimination of the, excuse me, maintenance position, which was a new addition in 1920, and this would slow the responsiveness to repairs and field maintenance. Moving on, transportation reductions, two bus monitors, and that would lead to less supervision to moderate students and promote positive behavior, and two bus drivers, which would lead to longer bus runs and overcrowding, and also limits the availability of drivers for field trips and other athletic events after schools. Certain athletic, excuse me, certain extracurricular clubs would be reduced, and the decision on which club specifically would be based on student interest and prioritized in September. Athletic teams, it would eliminate boys and girls, modified sports. And then finally, unfortunately, moving into the classroom, and Dr. Gosh, you can bail me out if I butcher this, two of these new positions that we're proposing for the 2021 school year, 1.0 CV-Star ENL and bilingual teacher, and 1.0 Wells Middle School social studies teacher, again, discussed by Dr. Gosh, the impact for the CV-Star ENL position, inability to reduce class size, and also continued non-compliance with Part 154 regulations that we hear about each year. Middle school, obviously, we are one middle school, excuse me, social studies position short of balancing our, our class sizes or, or, or content areas. So in total, that would result in a reduction of the tax levy of $1,145,165. In total, our contingency budget would be 1.78%. The tax levy would be the same as the 1920 school year, and you see no increase in the tax levy. So a reminder that you've got mail, or you should be getting mail. The budget postcard notice was sent out on Tuesday, May 12th, you should have received that. The budget newsletter is, is being prepped this afternoon and should be delivered tomorrow afternoon, so you should be receiving it later this week or early next week. And that should also align with the dissemination of the absentee ballots, which are being sent out, excuse me, by a separate company. And we're, we're doing our best to correlate these two, the budget notice newsletter, and also the absentee ballot, because we want to make sure that the community receives the budget newsletter in advance of the absentee ballot, so they're able to review it and make an informed decision before submitting their ballot. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th, so make sure your vote counts and allow adequate time for postal delivery. And everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So again, this was our ninth presentation. Up next is the budget vote and trustee election via absentee ballot due no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th. If you have any questions, please submit to budget@brewsterschools.org or BOE@brewsterschools.org. We've also created a Q and A document, which we are uploading to our website. We're going to continue to add to it based on questions that we get from the community so that we can provide thoughtful responses and get it out to anyone who has any other questions or, or similar questions. And as always, please visit our website, this presentation, many other presentations, our, our budget statement is uploaded. It's a 150-page document with a ton of supplemental data in there that will help give you a better understanding of what goes into creating our school budget. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah. Sonya, can I add one thing at the end before we start?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to thank Mr. Carlson and the business office team for all their hard work during this evolving situation. As he said, this is our ninth budget presentation. Also, Susan Gavin, our district clerk, who's been working tirelessly with all the paperwork and process, and also the budget advisory committee and finance committee for their hard work coming back to the table and assisting in the budget process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, we can see that, thank you. So just to go over a few things, and then Jim will go over a few other things. Mr. Trelor, so, let's see, I took some notes. As you can see here, we'll give a few minutes just to make sure everyone has an opportunity. At the bottom of your screen, you'll see a Q and A, not the chat, but the Q and A. So if anybody from the community wants to address the board at this time regarding the budget, you can indicate so in the Q and A, and Mr. Trelor will unmute your mic as we, you know, get to that part. And each person will go in the order that they've posted their request. And then please, just anything you have to comment or question should be about the budget. And then please just anything you have to comment or question should be about the budget. And I think that's it. Yeah, you posted here something. So Jim, what would you like to cover?
Just that once you are called on to, it's your turn for public comment. I will select, you will be given the ability to speak and then you can unmute yourself. Or I can unmute you. And then you'll have three minutes and we will give you a, a warning at with 30 seconds left. But just please use the Q and A. I see one person has posted. If anybody else would like to, please use that, that format. And that's the order that will go in for anybody that would like to make a public comment.
And I'll just also add, we will do our best to address any question or comment after each person speaks. Rather than wait till the end like I used to do in the live public meetings we had. And then once this portion is done and complete, we'll close the, this comment, the public comment section. And we'll continue on with our agenda as we have been doing and we've established for our Zoom meetings. So this will be the only live public comment portion of this meeting. And yeah, so, okay. So I think we're good. We have one person. I guess we can start with the one person. Jim, do you want to? I'm not sure, whatever you have to do from your end.
Hi there. Am I off mute?
You are. If you could just say your name, please.
Sure. This is Jamie Callanan. How are you guys?
Hello.
So I do have a couple of questions. The first one is a few weeks ago, someone asked for an accountability report of BOSEs on, you know, student attendance and all of those elements. So BOSEs very similar to last year's budget. The costs have gone through the roof. Understand it's on a rolling three years, but the costs last year were astonishing. The year before, this year, again, the rates are incredible. So how is there any negotiation? Is there any ability, everybody's in a financial crunch? Is there any ability to go back to BOSEs and say, is there any wiggle room? And then how do we go forth and limit the program to students that are, are going to be accountable? So that means attendance, that means that, you know, if something's happening that they're not showing that they are responsibly engaging in the program, then they're going to be limited because it is such a substantial expense. So that's one question. My second question is about the concern on whether the budget gets passed. I see the $50,000 for the modified sports. When you go through the budget and you start to think things that you might be able to sacrifice. So our kids can get back to some way of normal life and have sports next year. In seventh and eighth grade, you look at the 2025 vision. I understand when anyone planning for the future, but $18,000 increase there. You look at, you know, all of the little places that you would be able to cut to find $50,000 in order to be able to power sports. $28,000 is sitting in athletics. Well, if you don't have two years of sports. And the last comment I want to make about that is Brewster already has a severely limited participation in sports. We pull eighth graders up to play on varsity. We pull ninth graders up to play on varsity. And it is because we don't have enough students to fill teams. We struggle with this every year compared to those schools around us that have two teams, the A and the B team, all of those things. If we limit this, we are now limiting our ability to compete in sports be for the next four to five years for the students that are, that are going to be in seventh and eighth grade.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Dr. Banlow, would anyone on your team like to possibly address anything? I don't know. Are we in the position to address anything that was brought up in this question, these questions?
I'm just going to ask my team if there's any, anything that Jamie mentioned that we can address tonight. If not, we can certainly look into these things. Just reaching out to my team to see if they can address anything that was mentioned by Jamie.
I can jump in and partially address the first question, which has to do with, with BOSEs. So the numbers have increased over the years. And I believe a large increase in that is due to the career and technical programs. And I, I know that we wanted to open those doors to students who wanted to pursue, pursue those pathways. I know that also that the high school does monitor things like attendance for students who attend BOSEs. I don't know the exact details of that. I can, I can find that out for sure. But I know that is on the radar and is something that the high school team as well as the counselors look at.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh. Victor, did you want to add anything?
Sure. I'll just add that, so BOSEs is different than a school district. BOSEs is not allowed to accumulate a fund balance. So at the conclusion of each year, they operate more like a, like a not-for-profit. And at the conclusion of each school year, they'll add up the costs of each individual co-sir. And then they are required to return any unspent funds or any surplus back to the school district at the conclusion of each year. And, you know, BOSEs in recognition of the same environment, they're also subject to the same collective bargaining agreements that, that most school districts are. So they do recognize the, you know, the constraints of schools. I also want to note that our use of BOSEs also generates state aid. And that's one of the, you know, most important reasons why BOSEs exists for shared services. They were the original shared service organizations that inspire school districts to collaborate and work together. Using the BOSEs to, to help us to collaborate. And because of that collaboration, the state rewards those shared service agreements through BOSEs aid in our, on the revenue side of our budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Sonia, that's.
If I could just, one item, I did reach out to a couple of the people I've met on some local area boards to question them about where they might be making cuts as well. And a number of them did mention, I guess the sacrificial lamb is the modified sports program. So I'd be all for saving anything we can. We just also have to make sure these kids have teams to play against. Hopefully, you know, they will and everything will be able to go forward. But a lot of the feedback I'm starting to get back is that's usually where they start their cuts as well. So we would just have to make sure that we're all on board with saving the program so that these, our kids will be able to play against other teams.
But are we drawing, can I just say, are we, are we trying to advertise these sports and to draw as many participants as we can towards them? I think kids are interested, but I don't know if they're receiving the communication they should to get involved.
I do know, and I'm not, I don't think this is what Jamie is talking about necessarily. But I do know that, you know, some students, some elite athletes are, are brought up to play, you know, JV or, or varsity, you know, from middle school through the athletic placement process. But in terms of overall numbers, I, I know that, I'm not sure how we compare to other districts. I do know that athletics are advertised and there's partnerships with, you know, the, the community organizations that, you know, athletic organizations.
So certainly areas that we can, can keep an eye on if, if the budget goes down, hopefully not.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Jim, we have another person queued up, I believe.
Yep, Patty. Sorry Patty, there you go. Patty, we can't hear you. I see your mic is on. No, I think we lost her. Let's see, we have another.
Did Patty say that she could maybe call in and speak through the phone?
Are they able to type in the question? It looks like they could type a question.
Yeah, she is no longer on the call right now.
Okay.
I think she.
Yeah, she can get back in. In the meantime, actually, we, we did get an email prior to the start of the meeting about the budget. So I'll just take this moment to read, kind of summarize what the question was. And it just, it had to do with savings and, you know, what, hold on, let me just look at this. Um, it had to do with benefits and pensions for New York State unions. And is there any kind of review that can be done on the matter? You know, when it, when we're talking about savings and stuff like that. So if anyone from our administration can possibly address that.
Sure. So pensions are set in the New York State Constitution. So it requires a, an amendment to the New York State Constitution to change any of the pension benefits afforded to public employees in the state of New York. So the Brewster School District locally has no recourse whatsoever to change any of the pension benefits afforded by the teachers retirement system or employee retirement system. That again, would take an action at the state level to amend the New York State Constitution.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe Patty is back on. Patty, are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to commend all of us for doing a really great job as a district. I think through this, we have really found a really good place to help our kids. And for that, thank you. Thank me. Thank everybody. My question is, in the last meeting, you decided as a group to take a day of pay and two sick days away from all of the members in SEIU. As one of those people, I live for my pay. And I'm working really hard through this. And I'm doing things in the community and I'm really busting my butt. And that my pay is going to be taken and I have to give back two sick days is really, really distressing to me. So I would like very much to understand how that conversation went. And is it possible to turn it back? Because it's causing a lot of distress for me personally. And I know for everyone else in SEIU that I've spoken with, it's, it's a hardship. So that is my question and I really look forward to an answer. Thank you.
So Sonia, let me, let me start here. So Patty, first and foremost, we want to thank you for everything that you and the SEIU are doing for the district. And, you know, we've worked very, very hard with the executive team, with the Board of Education and with the Board of Attorneys to, to do what, what we best, what, what we can do to support you guys. So I wanted, Dr. Harrington, if you're there, if you could just talk a little bit about perhaps some of the conversations that you've had with the Board and the Board's attorney.
The Board and the Board's attorney. Sure. So, you know, again, I certainly would like to start with expressing gratitude with members of the SEIU and the work that they performed despite schools closure. They are our largest bargaining unit and they are the bargaining unit with the largest number of titles and a myriad of responsibilities within that particular bargaining unit. So we have individuals who are not able to perform their work functions based on school closure and others that at least impart. So this was an MOA that was worked between the district and the leadership in the SEIU. And certainly both ends felt that it was appropriate to request one single day to be foregone, given that the reality was such that no one was able to really effectively work an entire work week. And individuals, despite that reality, were still in good faith gesture by the district being compensated for the entirety of that week. So again, this was an MOA that was worked out with the, the leadership in the SEIU. We've had a good, healthy, longstanding relationship with the leadership in the SEIU. And certainly we want to make sure that we maintain and, and keep that. But there was an understanding that, you know, we are, the district is continuing to compensate employees despite the reality that they're not able to perform their necessary work functions. And we felt on both ends that it was more than appropriate and suitable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have.
We have.
Jamie, you indicated that you put your name on the list again. Would you, is this a new question?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So I did just want to follow up. Totally understand the whole BOSEs, the move towards that job market. And I'm excited to hopefully maybe have one of my kids take advantage of it. But I still want to revert back to the fact that it is, it is so much money. So there was a request last year, there was a request a couple of weeks ago about the accountability. I think we need to request a presentation on that to the board so that we all can ensure that the dollars that go towards these programs are adequately designated and are accounted for. It's not just simply a, yeah, they got on the bus. It is participation. It is a full report on what students are doing with their privacy, you know, completely intact. The other thing I just want to bring up is, you know, Victor, you and I have spoken about this many times. But anytime I go through a budgeting process, we do last year's budget and actuals. And then the forthcoming year's budget and the variance between those. This, this year's budget, just like how we always work in organizations, isn't complete. But what you do is the actuals and then the forecasted spend for the month, for the remaining months. And that is going to be less than what we have previously seen. So I am making an official request. You may, you probably already have it, but to show it to the public. And if I've missed it on your finance page, I'm sorry. But really be able to see the budget of, of the previous year, of the current year, actuals plus remaining months forecast, and then the future year. So that we really get a, a better understanding of when something is budgeted, what happens to that money. And it just has a whole nother level of transparency and clarity for people who are more financially and P and L oriented.
Thank you. Um, so there was a request for, for some additional information. And we can discuss that and see how we can, you know, get some more of that information out. If Dr. Banlow, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to ask, Jamie, as far as going back to your BOSEs question, as far as accountability, tell me exactly what it is that you're looking for. Cause I could certainly reach out to Dr. Ryan at BOSEs to see if there's any type of specific presentation that you're looking for. Can you give me specifics as far as what you're looking for accountability wise? I know you mentioned attention, attendance.
Yes, sure. I'm sorry. I just had to wait to get taken off mute. So thanks, Jim. Yeah. So of the, the kids that are participating, it's X number of kids participate, number of, of classes they missed. So very similar to, you know, in a
So very similar to, you know, an accumulative report of, you know, like, I was looking at my kid's attendance that I got in his, his progress report today from PPS. So I get to see how many classes did he miss. You're, I'm not going to go down to a student level, but maybe it goes down to grade level or something like that. So that you're actually able to see that kids that sign up for this are actually attending it. And then you, because it is such an expense for taxpayers, what happens when kids are not, are not attending regularly? What happens when kids are not, are not being shown to be active participants of it? What are the protocols to pull them out so that we get to reduce that spend in future elements? But it's really the request for accountability from our school that is sending them there and, and making certain that the reports, the attendance reports match what is happening at BOSI's. So that we are making certain that whatever dollars we spend on this truly valuable program, that's awesome, but that those kids are actually doing what they need to do to make that dollar count for the district.
Great, thank you. I will certainly look into that, same.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tralor, we have another person queued up. Or that wants to make a comment.
I just, sorry, I just wanted to say.
Just state your name, I'm sorry, thank you.
Carrie Hernandez, I have a junior in BOSI's. I also have worked with kids at my job who have gone through the BOSI's program. As a BOSI's parent, there is accountability both at the parent level and at the high school level. It's just like Brewster School District, if my kid doesn't show up to BOSI's that day and the school didn't call him out, Brewster has to call him out physically. If they don't, it's a phone call to the high school to see where the kid is and to the parent to see where the kid is. There's a portal, just like Brewster High School, that we can go on and look at grades, we can look at their attendance. All of that is readily accessible. I know the office, because I've, I've gone to pick my son up early and I asked if there was anything I had to do for BOSI's to call him out or anything, and the office already handles it. I know the office, you know, the office staff at the high school speaks to them on a regular basis about students and things like that. So I can tell you, as a BOSI's parent, the accountability that you're looking for is definitely there. You just may not be seeing it if you don't have a student in BOSI's or you're not, you know, working actively with the people that would handle that.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking, Jim, do we have anyone else in line to speak?
Nope.
Okay.
Patty just added her name again.
Okay, we can see if she has a new question.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I am curious if we are holding a virtual Meet the Candidates night? And when and how that will look?
Okay, thank you.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Yeah, so the PTA handles that, it's not a board thing, but please, Dr. Banlow.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, the PTA is in the process of getting that set up with Mr. Tralor and, and myself, and we'll certainly let the Board President know, so yes, absolutely.
And I assume once they have everything organized and in place, they will also send a notice out to the community. Because obviously, they want people to log on or however it is they're going to do it.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anyone else?
Nope, none at this moment.
Okay, seeing none, then we can close this portion of the comments for the public budget hearing. Thank you, everyone who participated and for everyone who was able to answer the questions. Okay, let's look at the agenda. We are now on to public remarks regarding any action items. And specific to this week's agenda, no comments or questions came in this week specific to this agenda's action items. So we can go right into our action items.
Our action items.
Am I, am I? Technology's not going great today. Okay. So action item number one, approval of resolution for a jewel agreement between the district and employee number 3368. Oh, Brett, we can't hear you.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes, yes.
This action item reflects an agreement between the employee and the district to extend the probationary period for an additional year beyond the standard four-year probationary term. Jewel agreements always require the review of the district's counsel along with the individual's bargaining unit before being presented to the board for their vote.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please, for this item.
Eric makes the motion.
Thank you, Eric, in a second.
Glenn, I made the second.
Thank you, Glenn. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, I actually just need to, Danny was having some technical issues because he was on the meeting. But he texted me that he's just having some technical issues from his end. So he may not be able to get back in for, you know, if he does, he does. If not, we'll have to just go through without him. But we still have a quorum, so we're okay. So with that, we just need to take a roll call vote for this item. And Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With zero objections, the motion passes 6-0. Okay, action item number two, approval of letters of intent for second year merger of one, Brewster Central School District Modified Ice Hockey Team with North Salem, Somers and Yorktown School Districts, and two, Brewster Central School District Varsity Ice Hockey Team merger with North Salem John J. Cross River and Yorktown High Schools.
I'll take this one. So this is another agreement of a merged team. So I believe the board approved another merged team agreement at the last, last meeting. This is ice hockey for, again, modified and varsity.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion in a second, please.
This is Scott, I make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. A second from anyone?
Sonia. I'll second it, it's Carrie.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, Victor's right, last week, we did the swim team. So I mean, it's another way to get the kids to be able to continue to play sport.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With zero objections, the motion passes 6-0. Action item number three, approval of policy first read 5672, information security breach and notification.
Thank you. This policy outlines key procedures and steps that need to be taken if and when a breach of student data occurs. This specifically outlines a change in who gets notified and how private information is defined. So our attorneys have reviewed this policy and the policy committee have discussed, and we submit it for your first read approval.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
This is Glenn.
Glenn?
This is Glenn, yep, give the motion.
Motion, I need a second.
I can do that, it's Krista.
Thank you, Krista. Questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, we will go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With zero objections. The motion passes 6-0, thank you. Action item number four, approval of separation agreement with BTA for employee number 866.
Yes, thank you. So again, this action item reflects the terms and conditions of separation with employee 866 and is consistent with prior separation agreements with employees of similar circumstances.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
Just Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carrie, in a second.
Eric makes the second.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. Zero objections, motion passes 6-0. Action item number five, approval of resolution to appoint election inspectors and chairperson for the annual budget vote and election, June 9th, 2020.
Yeah, I'll take this. So this is an annual resolution where we appoint our election inspectors each year for the annual budget vote.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item.
This is Glenn, I'll take the motion on the first.
Thank you, and I need a second.
This is Scott, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item?
I have a general question on the chairperson. Is there a standard person, that it's a trained position and we use the same people year to year? Or is it varied from year to year?
I'm going to ask Sue Gavin, I'm going to phone a friend and ask Sue Gavin, can you chime in?
I would have done the same thing, Victor.
I'm hoping that she's on and able to.
Yes.
We have used Ilvia Riolo for the past probably five or six years. She's trained with the Board of Elections. She's a qualified voter of the district and she is a great help during the vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Just regarding that, I know that Victor, with the Q and A that'll be going out, any questions that have been previously raised will also be included in that Q and A. So if anyone has questions, you can email the board or the, possibly the answers will be in that Q and A. Okay, so now we can go to a vote on this item. And Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
And myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With hearing zero objections, the motion passes 6-0. Okay, we now move on to the consent agenda. And Brett, is there anything? Want to address?
Yes, thank you, Sonia. Just, the board will note that we're welcoming two new teachers to JFK on this evening's consent agenda. Ms. Devon Hickey and Ms. Kara Jacobson will begin their probationary periods at the start of the 2020-2021 school year. Both will be filling vacancies as a result of retirements in the district. Both individuals come to us with several years of experience in primary education, and we look forward to their many years of success in supporting the needs of students in the Brewster community. Certainly a warm thank you to Dr. Zampolin and Mr. Conroy for their efforts in securing these two high-quality candidates. And finally, the district would like to extend its congratulations and warmest wishes to Ms. Dawn Flass, whose retirement at the end of the school year is noted on this evening's board agenda. We look forward to honoring Ms. Flass and our other retirees at our June board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
In a second.
It's Krista.
Thank you, Krista. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Krista Bararty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham.
Yes.
Eric Rutzner.
Yes.
Glenn Niles.
Yes.
Scott Seaman.
Yes.
Thank you, and myself, Sonia Masika, yes. With hearing zero objections, the motion passes 6-0. Okay, we move on now to remarks. There weren't any remarks that came in just in general. So we can move right into the board remarks and committee updates. If anyone wants to share anything.
I have just a couple of updates from the graduation committee. We've all seen the memo that went out and the broadcast and all the information. And they'll be, the first piece of that will be this week, on Thursday, they'll be going out and distributing items, cap and gown, to our seniors. Driving around the neighborhood, I think, between 10 and 1. So please, if you see a school bus, don't get worried and, and please just wait behind it like you normally would. It's just strange to see a school bus after all this time. But they're out there distributing information, which will lead to the next phase where they're going to come back to the school. There's pictures taken, there's full plans going out. And as more information goes along, more information will be distributed to the seniors and to their families. We also do have a graduation letter, a committee letter that we've sent out, and we're going to try to get out more. Basically, it's asking the town to celebrate our seniors with green and white. Everybody, lights, banners, signs, whatever you can do. Related to that, I want to thank the town of Southeast for lighting up the town hall. The rec department of Southeast in town decorated their office with signs and flags. The Yelts Club put a sign out on 22. The Brewster Rotary and Chamber are working on a number of things. There's much more to come in that regards. Related to our seniors, last week, we did have the Roxy Virtual Awards Ceremony. It was, it was beautiful, but it was bittersweet. But it was nice to see, you know, the kids were still getting their recognition, getting their information out there. And, you know, there's more to come and more will be put out. As we all know, this is not where we want to be, but this is where we are. So we're going to celebrate our kids, we're going to get them off right, we're going to keep them strong, and we're going to move on from there. And I promise, since Danny's not here, he's not going to make me cry. But, um, one side piece, I know we don't want to think about it right now, but the census, please, if you haven't filled out the census, fill out the census. Especially with everything going on, federal money's going to be related to the census and we're going to need it more than ever. So please do that. And to the long presentation that Mr. Carlson did on the budget, please, if you need information, continue to ask. If you have information and you see people have questions, please answer them or let us know so we continue to get it out. So we can get out the proper information on what people need to know to make a decision for their own. And I appreciate all the work that's been done. And I thank everybody involved, especially our students, who are, you know, the most affected and doing the most work. But it's not just the seniors, it's kindergartners, the eighth graders, and there's a lot of good stuff rolling out. And hopefully, we can do the best we can. And I thank you.
Can I just add to that, that the census, if you just, you can do it online and it's much easier. Instead of filling out the pamphlet that went out and all the boxes to fill in, they give you the option to go online, it takes two seconds. It's much, it's so much quicker. So if you want to just blow through it and not put it in the mail, do that.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Sonia, it's Glenn, I just, if it's okay, I just wanted to circle back with Victor real quick, I just had a question. Didn't get the time to ask him, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Victor, real quick, on the revenue piece. In regards to, I know you have a forecasted state aid number, number that we're projecting on. What happens if we come onto that number still? Do we then increase our expenditure off of the sales proceeds from the Garden Street? And if we, if we're able to increase that number to support the shortfall, are we, what does it look like for us going forward?
That is, that is a very good question. So. So, um, again, there is so much uncertainty with the state budget and also at the federal level as well. So we're anticipating the state is likely going to make the first move. Um, the governor and the budget director and the controller for the past, uh, probably two-plus months have been, uh, discussing potential cuts to schools of upwards of twenty percent. Uh, in Brewster's case, uh, you know, twenty percent is a significant amount of aid lost. Um, so an option that we could entertain is, again, further use of, uh, fund balance and reserves that reserve for tax reduction, the Garden Street sale proceeds that you described. Uh, or it could be drawn from rainy day funds. Um, you know, we've been discussing, um, you know, a number of, of different scenarios that may be presented to us. And, and really, we just have to kind of wait and see what, you know, what might try and transpire over the course of the next few months. Again, I'm, you know, I'm fearful that the state will, will react and the federal government may take, um, longer to react. Uh, so we may be, you know, stuck in limbo for quite some time where we'll start to have those discussions about how to make up that revenue loss.
Thank you. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So Sonia, if I could, just real quick, um, on behalf of the BEF, just wanted to let everyone know that our rise-up campaign is going, going very well. So much appreciation for the community and how they've responded for, uh, for the class of 2020. Uh, updates are regularly posted on social media, on Twitter. Um, but just to let everybody know, every dollar that's collected between now and June first goes directly to the class of 2020. So there's, there's no doubt that you can still make a difference. You can still make a contribution and it's immediately going to be impacted for the graduating seniors who, you know, who obviously have had, have lost so much, like so many people have said already. Um, so we just appreciate the support and the confidence of the community, and we look forward to moving ahead with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, um, so our next meeting will be June ninth. And, um, if anyone from the community would like to comment or have a question, you know, has a question for the board or the superintendent, um, or anything follow-up regards, you know, in regards to this meeting we had today, you know, please email us at boe@brewsterschools.org. Um, and I think that's it. We don't have executive session. Um, so we can adjourn the meeting. I just need a motion for that.
I motion, I motion, I motion.
All right, so Scott and then Eric, I heard you for the second. How about that?
Yes, I'll, I'll make the second, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, so to close the meeting, Krista Berardi, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carrie Cunningham?
Yes.
Eric Rutzner?
Yes.
Glenn Niles?
Yes.
Scott Seaman?
Actually vote no. And how does that mean?
What is your vote, Scott?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Um, and myself, Sonia Masika, yes. And, uh, motion passes six, zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Night.